Well, good evening. For the record, my name is Jeff Ames with the Ford Mountain Trucking Company, Ford Mountain Companies. Sitting next to me is Michael Reich from Respect, the geologist firm that we've hired to sample all the cores that are up on there. And John Newman from New Hampshire Soil Consultants. In our last meeting, we reviewed the engineer's letter, looked at the recommendation that the engineer put forward. And then from there, we were going to somewhat build or structure. Somewhat of an agreement, the same way that you do have with Nellie Rollins and Stephen Rollins. And today, I think we're on version eight or nine. Okay, getting things strained out. And I think with that in mind, the board would probably let him review that and.
To the board, what you have in front of you is an excavation permit. A letter from. That states that Ford Mountain Trucking have been pre-approved for the bond amount that's listed. In the permit and then attached to this, which I think that you keep with the permit, was all the plans. The Department Environmental Services AOT permit.
I think at the same time, your legal counsel and our legal counsel kind of shook hands on some type of an agreement that. The town is happy with.
Yes, the, that we, we talked about that at the last meeting. Exactly, the, our town council attorney Jim Raymond was happy with the pledge agreement.
Good, okay. I think the only, looking at this right now, the only, only question I end up having, did we ever get a restoration? Amount per acre from Keach Nordstrom? We're showing, we're showing $5,000 an acre and this is a. Probably six or seven year old number. And so I, I questioned whether, whether that would be sufficient. And I think we had, I thought we had asked Keach Nordstrom to come back to us with a restoration, recommended restoration amount per acre.
Thank you, remember, Jeff, we did ask on that. I don't think we officially did.
Yeah.
I don't believe there was a motion or anything made on that.
No, there wasn't.
Yeah, at the same time, I think it's a reasonable amount, you know, having my fingers in the construction business. The big thing, it will be a charity bond. In the event that someone doesn't pay on a charity bond, the insurance company. Will have a bigger problem with me not performing than the town. I can guarantee you that.
Well, the only, the, the issue here was that at the time, Keach Nordstrom had come back to us with a $10,000 per acre. And we had, had cut it back to five. And, and again, that's at least six or seven years old, so. Other than that, I, I think with the town council having reviewed it and, and I think Cam had gone through the, the format that we had used previously for the, the other excavation permit. And it appears all those numbers are, all the information is here, so that'd be the, as far as I'm concerned, everything else is okay. It's just a matter of that restoration bond.
Is that something that could be a condition of approval?
Yeah, I think we should just make that a conditional, because everything else is fine.
Yeah, yeah, I have no problem with that.
And what are you, what are you thinking?
Well, I, well, I would leave it to Keach to give us a recommendation.
Okay.
And then, so that would have the new, new letter of insurance and then would have to just revise. Number, number seven, item seven, with regard to the restoration bond, whatever that number would end up being. And then item 10 also. Which is reclamation. And I apologize for this. I fully expected we'd get something back from Keach on this.
And we also set up the one to where four or five thousand. And now you do is smooth it out.
All the material will be left on site.
Yeah, I mean, that's really operator and dozer and it doesn't take long to spread lume on an acre. With a dozer, especially when it's there. It's one thing if you're sitting waiting for it to be trucked in. And then it's basically it's hydro seeding on top of that. It doesn't, like I said, it doesn't take long to spread dozer. A lot of lume with a dozer on an acre. You still want Keach to just give it a review?
Yeah, just give us, give us a number. Whether five would be sufficient or whether he thinks it should be, it should be higher. And again, as I mentioned, initially it was $10,000 an acre for the other project.
Okay. So, everything else is fine. Just want to have Keach review line seven and 10.
Yeah, right.
Well. If you read nine, it says restoration shall consist either of the following, placement of wood chips, minimum depth of six inches or placement of topsoil of four inches.
Sorry, mine is, we got to change that. Statute, we were, we were in error on allowing wood chips. The statute specifically says loan. Is that 155?
Yeah, 155. Not, yeah, I mean, we, we can, we can get rid of that, but on there. The existing, the plans that we have, if this were to be approved, the technical note mentions.
It calls out loan.
Yeah, called out technical note PM and H21. Is that correct? Yep, yeah. So, I mean. It weren't designed in for wood chips.
Right. Well, I think it was just a matter of striking that, striking that option from the, from the permit. So, you know, I, I think we could, we could make a conditional approval, subject to changing that.
Let's have Steve review it, see if he's okay with that number.
Yeah, right.
And then obviously you're going to strike the wood chips out of there.
Right.
And.
Thirteen pretty much does that.
And item thirteen, right. Yeah.
Says loan and seeding specifications.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, and I think it's just a matter of just.
Yeah, we can.
Putting a line through that or just.
Yeah.
It's not, not a big deal.
Alright, so we want to make a conditional approval pending Steve's review of the $5,000 per bond acre.
Right.
Okay.
And then, just formality would be, or logistically, I mean. Once Steve gives that final number, we put it on this and then Jeff, the former company can sign this and then we can.
Then I can sign it.
Right. No, we wouldn't need a public hearing.
No. So. Need a motion to. Call out these items.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to provide conditional approval for. For Ford Mountain Trucking for the excavation off of Dow Road, excavation permit off of Dow Road. Subject to the review of the restoration amount per acre recommendation from Keach Nordstrom. Which would affect condition number seven and condition number 10. And to strike.
Wood chips from number nine.
Nine, A placement of wood chips, to strike wood chips from the, from the permit. And. Well, we should be able to get something back from Keach in a.
Call him.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I would end up doing. Someone hanging out my, my, my conditional approval as far as how many days or how much time we need. So if we have. We have the number come back from Keach, then you can contact Ford Mountain and just tell them what the number is. And if. You guys have any major heartburn, I guess you could request, request us to reconsider that. And you would have to then come back before us on that conditional permit, conditional approval.
I can understand the opinion that they wanted $10,000 when you're dealing with a ledge pit.
Mm-hmm.
Because that's quite a reclamation when you're dealing with straight bedrock.
Yeah.
But a sand pit. Well, I have no problem with your, you know.
Okay.
What you're proposing.
And the sand will go back quick.
Right, so. You want just, I was going to say 30 days.
Yeah, 30 days enough, because we called Keach right away. And then it's just a matter of, of if we have to change. Just the, the print of the, of the permit, that's all we'd be doing.
Alright.
You want 60 days?
No.
30 is enough.
30 is fine.
And. So conditional approval will expire in 30 days unless it's extended.
Okay. Second. Okay, all those in favor of granting conditional. Permit for the excavation permit for Ford Mountain Trucking.
Aye.
Aye.
What's that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we know where at with Keach and Nordstrom? I know we gave you a $5,000 deposit. I haven't seen anything.
Yeah, 13 pretty much. We'll have to talk to Chris and. The other thing.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm sorry, that's, I'm not necessarily them, I mean. Any ambiguity.
Oh, yeah. You can't open the door.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, the next one is continuation of a public hearing, application for an open space subdivision mapped 414 lots 142, 142-3. 75 and 76, Sandra Cross, for Thurston Pond Road, Deerfield, New Hampshire. I have a letter to read.
Are those the, those are the plans there?
Yeah, yeah. This letter was sent to us in January and somehow it didn't make it to us, but it will be read tonight. Dear members of the planning board, we are writing regarding the Mount Delight subdivision proposed by Edward Cross. We attended the December 14th planning board meeting that was included. Included this on the agenda, but it was announced that the engineers were not available and we were not able to attend the January 11th meeting. So we will briefly outline our message. Although we are not opposed to well-thought-out development in Deerfield, we are concerned that 16 houses on small lots, approximately one acre. Could be built very close to wetlands, especially. The wetland area just south of the proposed development road off Mount Delight Road and visible from the road. The number of houses would create a substantial amount of potential runoff close to the Lamprey River watershed. A disruption of a major wildlife corridor, ground compaction and other impacts proven to be detrimental to wetland and other natural areas. For 35 years, we have operated Van Berkom Nursery. Our main focus was growing native plants, helping with conservation projects and working with customers who are doing wetland mitigation. Our profession has made us keenly aware of the value provided to our ecosystems by undisturbed and healthy wetlands. We hope the board will consider. Also consider such impacts such as an influx to our overcrowded school as well adherence to the master plan. Thank you for the time, Leslie and Peter Van Berk. I have another letter.
They do have another couple of copies of these plans. If anybody in the audience would like to be able to take a look at them. Anybody interested? One up and grab a sec.
Hey Linda. Okay. This letter is from January 3rd, 2023. I am writing to express concern over the proposed open space subdivision on Mount Delight Road submitted by Mr. and Mrs. Cross. Town's infrastructure and 18 house subdivision will increase the demands on police, fire, emergency response and road maintenance. The Deerfield Community School and school busing and increased demands equals higher property taxes. Uh, the proposed road location is very dangerous curve in the road. Adding an 18 house subdivision will greatly increase the auto traffic and will decrease safety of my family and the. And the proposed residents of the subdivision entering and exiting Mount Delight Road. My vehicle has been hit head-on approximately 200 feet from my driveway by an oncoming car driving along the curve on the wrong side of the road. My family's vehicles have come close to being hit numerous times trying to enter and exit our driveway. Mailbox has been sideswiped numerous times by cars pulling off the road to avoid hitting an oncoming vehicle. New Hampshire Fish and Game Wildlife Corridor is mapped Thurston Pond. Land is a natural corridor for wildlife travel. The area. For the proposed development is critical wildlife corridor adjacent to an important wetland. Building on this land will disrupt the wildlife corridor and associated habitats. The property for the proposed development is made up of steep slopes and. With poorly to very poorly drained wetlands. Town Regulation State, Section 325 Open Space Subdivision, Section C objectives. Avoid the development of portions of sites which have poor soil conditions, high water tables and are subject to flooding. Or have excessively, excessively steep slopes. This proposal contradicts our open space plan. The current land being proposed for this project is made up of wetlands which of many are very poorly drained with steep slopes. Building here would result in the disruption of natural water flow which increases erosion caused sediment to be transported into grade water quality. The water buffers adjacent, adjacent steep slopes, the wetland buffers need to be enhanced and enlarged. The intended open space section of the proposed development is not evident. Questions arise regarding the plan to utilize the properties along Ridge Road, Class 6 Road. As part of the open space port of this development. According to the state law, Class 6 roads can have only one resident. Ridge Road Class 6 already has a resident on it. No additional development can occur on the cross properties on Ridge Road. It is inappropriate to utilize Ridge Road parcels as part of the open space because parcels are already deemed undevelopable by state law. The Deerfield section of 321 point, 325.1 Open Space Sub, Open Space Development Purpose and Objective states purpose. And to promote the most efficient use of land in harmony with its natural features and protecting the natural resources base. The intent is to enhance and protect the health, safety, convenience and general welfare of the inhabitants of Deerfield. I feel this site is not suitable for development. It does not utilize the land in harmony with its natural features and protecting its natural resource base. The proposed development will cause degradation to the property and its natural resources. The property surrounding it and Mount Delight Road. I do not feel the proposal meets the requirements of open space access to said open space and wetland buffer adequacy. I do not feel the property along Ridge Road should be considered as part of the proposal as these parcels are already undeveloped. I urge the planning board to deny the request for an 18 lot open space subdivision. Pamela Hayes. Okay. You guys. Take it away.
Board. Had just a reminder that they haven't accepted the application for open space yet, so.
Right.
I would make the recommendation that we. Now have enough information. Where the board could accept the application.
Well, I'll make that motion.
You have a second or you want me to?
You can.
I'll second the motion. All those in favor of accepting the application.
Aye.
Aye. Don, no, yes.
I still got to think on it.
Okay, so you're abstaining.
Yeah.
Okay. So. He should have who'd accept Fred McGary, accept Don Wyman abstain. Okay.
Redhead asked a site distance was one of the issues. Fred had asked if we could find a better location of the road and I spent. A lot of time, right, right now we're on the people of the road. Mount Delight Road and I went further to the left.
Little west.
It, it doesn't make it, you know, it doesn't make it any better. It, it keeps. More of the cutting for the site distance on the lot, but it, I mean, we got it at the best spot. Christian or engineer has looked into ways of doing site distances. I apologize for the. Late delivery of these, but my IT company actually got hacked by that ransom. Went through to our system, so we've been down and out for the past three, four days. Got all my stuff back today. So, I was able to put this together. The, what we were able to learn about Mount Delight Road is that it's actually a local too. Not only one vegetation one, we originally defined it as a collective.
True.
Which required the 400. Literally feet. So at the proposed. Intersection location as Roscoe originally had it. Uh, what I've given to you guys and yours is a red line. I want to differentiate it from the other one. I left the original on there with the 400 feet. But I think the most important thing, and I know this was, was an issue with several of the board members. We still have, you know, in excess of 400 feet site distance to the west, but to the east, you can see where. Now we're not even having to go past that particular curve as far as we did. So the sight line or the sight triangle only bleeds into a lot about 8.7 feet. Uh, where it was significantly more than that before. And I know that Roscoe had spoken with. The gentleman who does the mowing for the municipality.
Sam Boy.
And he, he indicated that with his, I'm not sure, is it just a brush hog on a farm?
It comes back ever up to 12 feet.
Yeah, so he can get 12 feet, so he can get over that stone wall and clip the vegetation to keep that sight line clear. So anyway, I just wanted you guys to see what the actual 335 foot sight line looks like. And, you know, if, if the gentleman end up. Okay with this location, we'll obviously update the profile data as well. But I did want you to at least be able to see that distance and how far that sight line at the 335 projects in property.
Okay.
We've shown a location for Sistern on the road we're making, but we've also considered. Putting it on Mount Delight Road and giving the strip of land, because you guys are concerned while you're. Having the town cut brush on private property. Well, if we put the Sistern on Mount Delight Road. We would give that strip to the town. And did you have any left to talk to the buyer chief?
I spoke to him.
Oh, good.
And he's, he's happy with the Sistern located at the intersection.
On the, on the proposal.
No, he didn't, he didn't, he just at the intersection.
Okay. So, did he, I, I emailed and asked if like either one, so did the only one, one, or he didn't even look into the second?
So you were thinking about like where the rock wall is to put that, put it like here, Roscoe?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Here or here?
Now that would impact the, the open space buffer. So you'd have to leave that out of the open space buffer. Because the open space buffer is supposed to be vegetated. So you'd have to redraw, redraw the property line for. For that first lot. Lot 142-4.
Even though we're giving it, well.
So what you're saying Fred. This.
I would get courtesy out here, because I'd like to see this wall go.
Well, the only problem is if you take the wall out, then we need, need to put in property markers to, yeah.
Why, why wouldn't you remove the wall?
Because there's no ditch there on the road. And it, right now. Irregardless whether this was here or not, there's no ditch, so I can't even maintain the road out there. Go ahead, Roscoe.
Well. With, what Fred just said, I need to think a little bit more about it. But I mean, it, it can go right where we've been showing all of it. So we'll, we'll look into that a little bit more to see how it affects that lot.
So.
It, you know, Pete, just for consideration.
Yeah.
I know the challenges that you have with no ditching on that. This is really just a thought of, you know, can we take advantage or can the town take advantage of getting the early movement? That's not going to be available if we put that Sistern on the inside. It, it doesn't matter for me where it goes.
Well, there's, there's, obviously there's a few things we got to look at here. You know. Where the wall is, where the proposed Sistern is. Is that. Lot? The whole lot would be deeded to the town of Deerfield or just that little section where the. Um, Sistern is?
It'd be like a 20 by 30.
Okay.
Piece.
So.
We'd, we'd bump out the, the right of way.
Yeah.
To encompass that.
So. That, where that property line right now is, it's almost, it's, it's a little bit further behind the building setback line of lot 142. If you, as it faces the road. No, I'm talking about right, this is the building setback line. As your Deerfield area. This would be the lot right here.
Yeah.
So. You were concerned about this as in the buffer?
Well, the, if it was out to the, at, at Mount Delight Road, then it would be in the, in the buff, well, in the buffer both ways, but. Uh, I guess from the standpoint of being a long cross-country road, it's not so much of an issue as it would be out at the road itself, but at. It's not so much of an issue as it would be out at the road itself, but at Mount Delight Road.
Yeah, because of this being the new access.
Yeah.
It wouldn't begin the buffer, it'd be a new lot line, then we'd come a hundred feet from that new lot line.
Yeah.
It's, uh. It might not hurt us that much from that lot. If we're only talking. So for site distance, would we? Do we do soil or? I know, just, just. But we could certainly give an easement to. If that wall's not giving you a ditch.
So if you look at this. Is this. Based on that new sight line? Right through here? Based on the classification of the road? That makes a big difference. Right there.
Mm-hmm.
And that, if, if that were scoped back, that would certainly help line of sight even better.
Yeah, this is something to look at.
Mm-hmm. This is, this is a related comment, but, uh. The, um. The yield plan. For a conventional subdivision does not bring the road out at the location that, uh. That we're talking about for the open space development. We're probably. At least a hundred feet to the. To the east. And, uh, obviously that would have an impact on the lots. The lots on the lot one and lot three, so I think I probably want to have you take another look at. Yield plan to see what impact that moving the road to the location that we're talking about right now would have on that.
It, it works there too. You want to do a site distance?
No, 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 I'm, I'm talking about the yield plan itself. And what impact that would have on those lots.
The yield plan has the road over a little bit more than.
Yeah, about a hundred feet.
Yep. The wrong was being over a hundred feet.
Because it, it's even worse sight distance issue than, than the way we got it located now. So it obviously would have an impact on lots one and, one in, uh. One and three.
On the yield plan. I've got the road a hundred feet further over. We just will get a three hundred and wherever, I mean, I could drop off of other. Yeah, we, we can. He could draw us. Uh, sight line for that location too, and.
And that location is even worse. So you can't, what you're told, we're basically, I know, but we're looking at a potential yield. And if you can't put the road where you, where you're talking about putting it because of significant sight distance issues. You can't have that road there, it has to be moved over.
No, that, that won't work here.
Well. No, it doesn't work for me. Doesn't work for me.
Why?
Does be, because. It's a hundred feet further to the east, makes the sight distance even worse, so you can't have that. As the proposed. You, road for the yield plan. Well, you can, but I'm not going to approve it.
Like you don't play, and like how many? Do with something, I could have a yield plan with a loop of roads all over here, they don't have to be the same thing. I thought, a yield plan, how many lots can I?
Right. That's right.
A yield plan doesn't mean, well, what you're finally gonna do, a road here, you have to have a yield plan, no, that's, show me the rules where I have to do that. If this worked with the site distance. Well, yeah, let's, let's just have a little look at. Or I can spend six hours and try to put it the same lot and. Get the same number of lot.
Alright, so if you made, made the additional changes, I obviously didn't make that change. But made additional changes with regard to the other comments that we had made.
I mean, oh, uh. Covered everything in the comments that would go with me. He just got his computer back today, so I think he hasn't. Correct, yeah.
So we're not, we're not ready to send the plans to Keats Nottingham then, right?
No, and in fact, Mr. McGary, we just. Got two days, but. That the soil is snapping as well from the soil, but. So that'll have to be incorporated in the plans and, and during the study.
Okay. So I think we're still. Still not ready to turn them over to Keats Nottingham.
No, well, no, it's a waste of money for them to send them there. And then. Oscar, can we talk through lot eleven? I, I think it's lot eleven, it's the one where the.
On the yield or the?
The potential, the proposed. You know, proposed house location, the one that's kind of way in the back. The, uh, is that lot eleven?
Yes, this is all lot eleven. I go back to that. So it's just right here. They have a driveway right here and they got. Neighbor and a half of. The tingle side. This is where they build on it. Well, I'm showing potential houses and stuff, it, it could go. They have to go anywhere within the. Setback line, so that would easily work. But I did, I actually showed two.
Okay, so the one south?
Yeah, the one south of the, that's where he put it.
We did, you did revise lot eighteen.
I mean, a lot bigger than that.
Yeah, it, uh, it's. From my standpoint, a more realistic lot than what, uh, what we had previously.
So on lot eighteen, you're showing two potential house sites, correct?
No, I just want.
So there's, there's one just south of the.
So you got, you got eighteen here and seventeen.
Yeah.
So.
You got two lot.
Yeah, that's, we got two sites on.
Two sites on seventeen.
Two, or two on seventeen.
Right.
Okay.
And eighteen is definitely a better lot than what had been shown previously.
So how much? Time do you need to? Get all your wetlands and stuff? On the plans? I mean, um, your.
Soil.
Soil. Okay.
Once we know we're good with the layout of. Test it.
Okay, so.
I think we can send it each before. And how much time do you have to make something to develop that? Well, once I, once I get the soil, Roscoe, um. I think we add some of the most of the. We've had several pits that work for you, but not for us.
So probably two.
The only thing I want to caution you on is that if the. The HIST maps come back showing better, better locations than what you've got for the. For the eighteen lots, we may be talking about making revisions.
Do you have the actual subdivision? On, on, on the.
On the actual.
Yeah, I try to make sure I'm understanding.
Right. Because when you, when you're laying, laying these out in open space, you should be taking into consideration the soils that are available. And, uh, if you've got better soils and different, better spots on the, on the. Property, then you're gonna have to take and seriously look at revising. Uh, those layout on those lots.
For the whole lot, not necessarily the septic area, you're talking about the whole lot, the whole lot.
Someone else worked to. Design this, I mean, you've got a wet. And a wet. And a big chunk of. Good dry land. So there's, a, another person would have it very similar to me, they may have the road back and forth a little bit. I'm keeping it so our steepness open, what you can buy percent on the road, it's on the profile. So, I mean, the, the grade works perfect where I have it. Um, any better soils maybe within a hundred feet of the wet, so that. Big hundred-foot buffer just. Gives us. One blob of area to work with. And all the little fingers, we can't be. You know, with this stuff, it works. I've looked at it very hard, um. We'll put the, uh, pits on. I mean, I've. Seen on every inch of the property and where I'm showing these buildings, everything is so good. So, but. We'll get that on paper and.
Okay. So you want a continuation to?
See if we get any.
Okay. But that's what you're asking for, basically.
I mean, I think one is probably fine.
Okay.
And if it doesn't work. Yeah, well, we'll request. One more question if I may, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Before we move on. Um, so I just want to kind of straw pull the board. With regard to the. Conferations of it. We're okay with the, uh, with the driveway at this location at this point, or the roadway at this location?
No.
I was asking the board, actually.
Yeah, I, I think we need to go out and take a look, uh, the, uh. You know, the contours that are shown on here don't actually reflect, fully reflect what's out there. This, these, the contours you got here are all from, um. A, um. Off the state website, Lightar.
It was, um. He had a previous survey that was gonna do a smaller, he, and didn't own all the other lots.
Mm-hmm.
He had actually took it all by hand and it virtually was the same, it's all the same system. That, that whole area was done by hand twenty years ago. But I have that, I have. I've been finding Lightar to be. So close, for me to survey, I, I'd have to take a shot every three feet. Here at the Lightar. I generally do it every ten feet or twenty, depending on it. So Lightar is really.
Yeah, the. My observation was when I went out there and took a look, we've got a, the stone wall is up on a higher. A higher embankment than what's shown here.
That was along the road?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Particularly to the, you're going to the east.
Well, I mean, are we ready for a site war? Before our next meeting?
As long as it doesn't snow.
Do you want to, do you want to have a walk? About this particular road entrance location?
Yeah, probably a good idea.
Yeah. And then you can flag out the, uh. Flag out the, uh. Line of sight. Just.
Or the, or the site distance.
Yeah, just put a nail in the road. Or a flag on the, on the side. And then that way, you know, it will be easier. Through the center line of the road and. We can stand pretty much where it's gonna be.
Yeah.
And, uh. And go from there.
And it's certainly for me that the issue still remains with regard to sight distance up to the east.
Okay, you stand there and look at it.
Mm-hmm.
That's my question on it.
Yeah, okay, um. Members of the audience? Any minute?
Could you?
Yeah, I'll have to come over to the mic, please.
And identify yourself.
Karen. Karen Festa, Mount Delight Road. I just have some questions. So, um, just looking at the plan. Quickly. And this is, you know, just questions, because that's what we can do as. Residents of town, but how come on the map on the two left? Top. Lots, they're both one forty-two twenty, one forty-two twenty. Why is that? Just might be.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I see what you're trying to say.
Might just be a typo, but just want to know why. If there's any significant reason why they're both labeled the same number.
Really shouldn't be.
It's on the first page.
Yeah.
The eighteen. Like that, you can see. Yeah. I can, I can read it, they both say twenty, twenty.
Yeah.
Shows you're like. Not paying attention to.
I'm sorry?
That's someone on Zoom.
Somebody zooming in.
So.
So continue, Karen.
Okay, so that was one thing, and then, um.
No, I am muted, I was unmuted.
Where you have the area to be cleared for sight distance that we've been talking about is right in front of that marsh area.
Yeah.
So, I mean, the idea of just knocking down a stone wall in this town. You think it's insignificant to just knock down a stone wall if we have to make a site clearance? Are you planning to do that across the rest of this town? Wherever somebody wants to put a subdivision, just knock down a stone wall, I mean, I don't like that idea.
Well, I don't either.
But I'm not saying that that's happening, I'm just saying.
No, what it is, this is what I'm saying, Karen, this is, I, what I asked was. Is if the cistern were to go out on the front there, because what happens is, because. The, the wall and the road are right on top of each other, okay, so the road falls apart, okay, and this has nothing to do with their subdivision or anything. So what happens is that we have a hard time trying to fix this stuff. All I mentioned was, is if the cistern was. And they had mentioned about the fire chief saying at the intersection, so whether it's on, if it stays on the. New road is one thing, if it were to go out on the other road and it were gonna be next to the rock wall. It would, it could go there. Now, is that a matter of what's gonna wipe out all the rock walls in town? No. It was just the suggestion, if that's where it went, okay, because what it would do.
Yours.
If, if it happened, and I'm not saying it's going to happen, is that it would make the line of sight better, that's all I said.
And I wasn't pointing at you, I was pointing at the fact that on here, it says area to be cleared. For sight distance and somehow in the conversation, the knocking down of the stone wall came up, and I'm like, okay, well. I was gonna ask for clarification on what that meant.
It, it's, it's not.
Okay.
It was, it was something that was brought up, nothing was declared that that's what was happening.
I'm just making a comment.
No, no, that's fine.
No, we're, it's not only making a mess of those places. The people in town are gonna have a better sight distance going around that.
Anyway, um, so then I had a couple other questions, um. The planning board, and I appreciate all that you guys do, um, we have, many of us have submitted letters. And I guess for my knowledge, when do those letters and the. And I guess for my knowledge, when do those letters and the questions and or ideas inside those letters get addressed? The wetlands, the steep slope, the concerns about schools, the concerns about roads, all of that stuff that. What is the purpose of us writing letters? It just gets read at the meeting, but. Nothing happens after that. We're encouraged to write letters. To give our point of view. And so what happens to that? There are questions in some of those letters, mine included. And I, I just don't understand where to, to come into play as far as getting answered.
Well, when you write the letter and, and basically like with, with the letters that I read, they bring up. Sections of the zoning rules that we have and their concerns about them. So we have to review those concerns. They have to design whatever they're gonna design to these rules. And it's up to us to make the determination whether or not they're complying to the rules that we have. And if they don't, then that's, then they have to make it comply somehow.
Right, so.
If they can't, then that's a whole different story. But a- as far as. Like, this is the design criteria. If they can't design it to this, then they can't make it work.
Right. So I understand the rules, but I also wonder about the fact of wetlands. Wildlife corridors. You may be within the rules. But does that mean just because we can, we should? You know, I, I'm just gonna leave it. Just gonna leave it there.
Deerfield has the most strict rules of all the towns I've looked at, hundred foot to wet. There's the wet out there. We're, we're over a hundred feet to these wetlands. We're gonna have detention funds. They're gonna clean this water before it goes anywhere. Uh, and we're conserving eighty acres or more to the south. If we did a regular subdivision, the whole property, the house roads and house work, we're going one little corner. And staying a hundred feet from wet, all the water you take, have, will you find it to plant the state, uh, D S, they're looking at all this.
I, I understand that. I understand that. I don't think eighteen houses is little. So we could just leave it, cause it could be fifty. I get it. I get it. I'm just stating my thoughts about it. And the other question I had was, um, has the planning board folks themselves walked on? The land that's in question here as far as development?
No, we haven't yet, and that's why we'll end up.
Well, we will be.
We'll end up taking a field trip.
So will that happen before anything gets approved and all of that?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Anybody?
It's open to the public. It's, it's a continuation of the public hearing.
Okay.
So.
Those questions, I mean, as, you know, residents, we.
Yeah, yeah.
Don't always know the, the ways of things. And then who's Keith Nordstrom and what?
They are the town engineer. They are a review engineer. So when they present plans to us. We don't just sit here and go, okay, these are sent out to a professional engineer who reviews them and. The particular people that review these happen to be on other review boards as well. So they, this is what they do. They review plans like this and they find potential flaws in them. Or flaws and bring them to our attention. That's what they do. That's what a review engineer does. It's how engineers make money. They review other engineers' plans.
Okay, go ahead Karen.
I think that, I think that's it.
I'm gonna want to, I'm just looking at this now. I'm gonna wanna see what the impact would end up being. If we move the access road fifty feet to the west, essentially having the, uh. Sideline of the, uh, right of way. Uh, actually end at the what? The e- the easterly lot corner for what, uh?
So where it says, S seventy eleven, ten west, south eighty point eleven, this, this right here.
We can look at it a few. I'm at the peak of the hill.
Right.
I tried it here, um, that also worked.
So if you, so if you move it there, the center, this little goal is at five twenty-six and you'd move it down to five twenty. So Fred, right here, you've been looking at this elevation right down in here, be like five twenty.
Well, it just.
Just, you wanna see what it looks like.
See what it, what it looks like and even what, what that does to the site distance.
To the west or to the east?
To the east.
Okay.
And certainly if, uh, if need be, the offset improvement could end up being, taking that hump out on, uh. Taking that hump out on the profile there.
I mean, in the road.
In the road itself, yeah.
That would make the bank steeper on the rock wall.
But would be.
Which is more of a problem. Yeah, even though you move it this way, once you take that hump out, you start making this a mess. But let's see what it looks like.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, anybody else?
Pam Hayes, Mount Delight Road.
Okay.
Um, I wanna thank you for, um, taking the initiative to, you're gonna do a site visit and allow us to go look. Um, cause my concern is that my driveway is right there and it's clearing, um, trees. On the side is, is not gonna change the steep. I am at seventy-seven Mount Delight Road. I am right there.
You're directly across.
I am directly across. And the problem is, is the peak of that hill in that curve in the road. And clearing trees is not gonna change that blind spot for cars coming west to east. That's where the big problem is. That's where I, my car was totaled. And so clearing trees is not gonna fix the site clearance if that's where you wanna put the entrance to that road. And may I suggest that if you're gonna go out there, I would like one of yous to try and park in my driveway. And try to get out of that driveway while two of yous are going east-west at that intersection.
We'll take a look at that too.
You're more than welcome to do so. Thank you.
Go ahead.
When you're on the inside of a curve that's.
Okay.
Hi, Steven O'Gara, sixty-seven Mount Delight Road. Um, I, I back up a lot of what my neighbors have already said. And, uh, you know, last, last event meeting got canceled and there was a gentleman here and he brought up a good point and I kinda backed that. And, um, everything we've been talking about here, whether it's open space, um, traditional development. Or whether it's Ed Cross's land or not, it's not about that. I, I asked myself. How does the town of Deerfield benefit from a, another, say, uh, eighteen house subdivision? How does the town of Deerfield benefit from that? Infrastructure, everything that we've already talked about, the letters have been sent in and everything. I, I just, in, in, um, just like Karen had brought up, I, I asked the same thing. I asked myself. Do the letters, the comments, um, e- everything that we talk about and bring up, does it matter? Or are we just spitting into the wind? And I like to see it. It made me feel good that, 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 that. That Fred actually got throttled up there and it was like, le- legit, cause I mean, this isn't a joke. I mean. Look at how many, how many towns were small agricultural towns like Deerfield? That aren't anymore for, be- because none of their growth was planned. And for, for some reason, everybody thinks that paving or developing every piece of property is progress. And, and then I asked the gentleman here, like, like, uh, Rosco, I mean. I, I've read some, some, and, and I'm not, I'm not singling you out, but it's kinda interesting because you're, you've, you're yourself, you have a lot of land. In the land conservation, everything. And, 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 and I try, I try to see both sides of things, but I ask myself, it's like, like. I, I know you're work, working for Ed and, but it's like, wh- why do we need to pollute? I don't know if that's the right word. Why don't we need to make a mess of Deerfield? Why don't we go to Raymond or go to Cloxit or somewhere that's already, they've already made a mess of?
Can I, can I address that question?
Go ahead.
Um, I've, as you say, I am staying from this for tonight. I wanted to get more information. But what you just said right there, that to me, that's not a viable comment. Because just because you don't want it in your, I've lived in this town my whole life. Just because you don't want it in your backyard, why do we wanna put it in another town? So I don't like that analogy. Let's put it in Raymond, let's put it in Epping. So to me, I don't like that kind of an analogy. Uh, and that puts me backwards on that one. So if, if you look at that, that's one part of it. Then the other part of it is when we say, what is the town gonna gain by doing this, right? Um, I guess, you know, when I moved into town, Mount Delight didn't have any houses on it. I knew the contractor that built all you guys' houses. So, and if you wanna put in that analogy, what did the town gain by letting you people put your houses there? You know, it, it gave you a nice place to live. I guarantee it. Deerfield's a beautiful place to live. And I don't knock any one of you guys wanting to build a house over there. It's beautiful area. But we have to sit back and try to figure, maybe some of these people here live in those places that you wanna put these developments. They don't wanna be there anymore. They wanna come to a nice quiet rural area like you. So this might be all they can afford. And it's, it is expensive. I know, I'm, I'm in that market. I see these houses going. I see little how, little pieces of land going for very expensive. So we gotta kinda watch how we're, how we're phrasing that kinda thing, because that'll turn somebody off quicker than it'll turn somebody on, for me included.
Yeah, well, let, let me, let me reiterate that a little bit. I didn't, I didn't mean it exactly like that. What I, what I meant it as was that those towns were like Deerfield at one point. And if, a- a- and I, and I appreciate all the work that you guys do. But i- if, if we don't watch what we do, it's gonna end up like that. And what I meant was, since they already ended up like that. You know, it's, it's like, it, it's like when I'm, I moved here not to move into a town that has subdivisions. That have homeowners associations.
Right.
And when my wife and I moved here, we didn't add two people to the town of Deerfield. We replaced two people. And I was the guy that didn't wanna Dunkin' Donuts, didn't want streetlights, didn't want. I didn't, I didn't care that I have septic or I don't have sewage, all these things. And it just, it just scares me to see, uh, and like I said, this isn't a personal attack on Ed.
No.
It could be somebody, somebody else's land too. I just don't see it. I mean, you, you read. The board's goals are to protect the safety and welfare of the inhabitants of the town and to maintain Deerfield's rural character and quality of life. And I think what. This issue here is, is, is maintaining the rural character and quality of life. And kinda the agricultural town that it, that it's always been. So, I mean, if. It didn't come out right, I'm sorry, it didn't come out right and.
I just, just, that was the way I took it. And I know it's not the way you meant it, but that's the way it can be perceived.
And, and, uh, I mean, you know, I, like I said, this is, this is a lot, a lot of work goes in all this. And I, and I say to myself, the thing is, if it, if it goes through, people don't take the time to speak up and, and, or, or voices aren't heard. And it all goes through and then it's like, oh man, this was, this didn't work out right. What, then what do you do? Bulldoze it? No, it stays there. And then you kinda have to deal with it. So. Anyway, others might wanna speak and I, I know it's a long night, so we'll wrap it up.
What, what we have, what we have to do is to take what, what you had read with regard to the function of the planning board. And also consider the rights of a property owner to develop their property.
Yeah.
And we have to. Have a fine line and balance it.
Tough.
So that.
Exactly.
We're trying to look for, out for the, for the, uh, the other property owners in town. But also give a, a property owner a right to, to develop. And, uh, that's, that's the line that we have to try and walk.
So when they present a plan. They have to, they have to bring all of the information before us. And basically show us how they comply with the rules that we, the town has set up. And that is what our job is to do. We have to read all of this, look at what they present us, and then make what we, our best. Call on what the plan is. Does it comply or does it not comply? Now, I understand that there's, I. I've been to a few meetings where people were against something and, and, and they have every right to be against something. But we also have to remember that the people that own the land have the right to make the presentation. And you can't just vote no to vote no, because that turns into a lawsuit. Because if you don't have a, a, a good reason to stand on, something that. They're not complying with is a reason to vote no. If they're, if they're complying with the rules that we've set up and we vote no. Then we're in.
Yeah, I, I understand that.
So it's not, I get, the, everything that people send to us and we read, we understand it. As Fred, you, you said Fred got a little excited. Well, because he saw something that he didn't like, okay? And, and it's up to us to go.
Usually get excited.
If we don't, if we don't like something, that's what we're, we're here to do.
I, I just think, we, we just, we just want, we just wanna make sure that, that. You know, we're not, we're not spitting into the wind either. I mean, cause they're all valid points. So.
Okay.
But thank you.
You're welcome.
I can't tell you. You might be cruising up my driveway.
No, you said sixty-seven, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you're not on the plan here.
See, that's been, that's been brought up before. It's like.
Doesn't matter.
Oh, you're at six.
It doesn't matter.
No, but it's, no, but it's like, you're at sixty-seven. Oh dude, you can't even see it. That's not what it's about. Ca- Karen almost got taken out the other day on a Sunday, we're trying to walk her two dogs without an eighteen house subdivision. It, it's, it's a rural, it's a narrow, you're lucky to have a twenty feet.
Twenty. I'll give you a story. Just before, as you pass this road to go up the hill on that sharp curve hill at two thirty in the morning. And I'm out there looking at, see how much snow is on Mount Delight Road. Is a person who lives on Mount Delight Road who came down from where Mr. Reagan lives. And he slid off the road in a snowstorm. And, uh, he goes, well, I was only going twenty-five. And I said to him, well, I'm only doing fifteen. So twenty-five was too fast for the snow. So unfortunately, um, I know we have some speed limit signs up because I was just talking to. One of the policemen who said he, uh, he pulled somebody over on Birch Road for doing fifty-seven miles an hour. Okay.
On Birch?
On Birch. Okay, fifty-seven on Birch. So unfortunately. Some rules apply to some people and not to others. So I mean, so I understand exactly what you're talking about when you're walking in the street and, you know. Why is somebody, you know, almost taking you out? Cause either they're on this or they're just going too fast. So there's a lot of reasons why we have this stuff happening. I mean, the same thing when the guys who work for the town are out in the road. I said, always keep, keep an eye on what's coming at you, because you don't know whether or not they're paying attention. And I've been working in the road for the last forty years. And I've, I've had police working for me almost get hit. So it's, it's, all these things that you bring up, we consider.
And you're gonna have to apologize for the fact that you're not a direct the butter, because the board has always taken the position of, of hearing input from. Anybody who's in town.
I'm up here on the mountain.
Yeah.
And I'm short.
That doesn't matter.
Well, what I like to say is. Deerfield used to be one shrimp a land. And over the years, uh, when I say after nineteen seventy, uh. Probably ninety percent of the people live in subdivision. And. They have, they're all, they have the three acre lot. And some people have a hundred acre lot. And I mean, stare at the ham, I mean, we're, we'll get sterile if we don't. And I mean, stare the hamper, I mean, we're, we'll get sterile if we don't just stop. No more houses, no more law.
If, if my, just to let Ed know, we can work a deal. If my lottery number wins tonight. I will buy all of Ed's property and I will leave it undeveloped, but.
There you go, Ed. You heard him. Okay. Anybody else? Anybody else?
Dick, Dick Bovair.
Go ahead, Dick.
Dick Bovair, sixty-eight Church Street. I've got a question about process. Uh, in describing some of the work out there, I think it was, uh, Mr. Blaisdell. Uh, was in reference to ditching says, well, if we need to ditch, we can just take out the stone walls. My question is, the stone walls are there, they're, they're boundary markers. Uh, they have certain kinds of protection. And, uh, is the status of the stone wall, whether or not it's going to be retained, penetrated, moved, destroyed? Is that something written into what you approve? Do we know in advance? Or can someone legitimately decide, well, it would look a whole lot better if we took the stone wall out, so it disappears in an afternoon? Uh, how much is the status of the retention or removal of stone walls? In particular, this case on the road, written into what you approve?
It's case by case.
Yeah, and, and, uh.
I mean, yeah, we, we don't just go rip them down.
No, no, but is it written into what you approve?
It could be.
Right.
It's not necessarily written in, but if, if we were to go to a sidewalk out there and. We made a determination that, you know, the wall could be removed or moved.
Mm-hmm.
That, that could happen. It's not saying it's going to happen.
Right. But if it's not written in.
Could be a condition.
It could be a condition, but if it's not a condition, then it could be a subjective judgment executed, uh, le- legitimately. Uh, during construction, uh, it wouldn't, uh, they, they might or might not do it unless it's written into what you approve. They could, uh, at, at their discretion, uh, remove, uh, or whatever the wall.
Well, say like, one of the points on this rock wall that we're talking about, there's a drill hole in it, which is a property corner.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, once you start removing those, somehow they'd have to be replaced.
Right. And, and my, my, my issue is not if it's going to be removed. My issue is the process of, uh. Uh, will the stone walls be written in as, uh, their status written in, uh, moved or not moved, whatever? Uh, and is, is, I, I, as I understand what you tell me, it's not a requirement. You might do it, you might not. If you don't do it, then the, uh, developer has the discretion to remove them. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Up to a point though.
But not the property corner. That, that's where things kind of get into kind of gray area.
Right. And angle points in the wall are also. Property lines and those that have to be replaced with stone bounds.
Mm-hmm. Um, the, the rural character of Deerfield is something that everybody points to. The vast majority of people, uh, support that. And the stone walls are certainly part of that rural character. And I would encourage the board to do everything possible to retain stone walls wherever possible. I understand sometimes there's safety issues, uh, and, uh, that they need to be, uh, given a priority. But, uh, I would like to have a situation where, uh. The people of Deerfield know in advance that the stone walls are going to be retained. If they're going to be, if you decided they should be retained and it written in, so it can oppose to something that might happen on an afternoon. Uh, where, uh, someone on, uh, a vehicle says, you know, this really doesn't make any sense to me, so I'm going to move it. And once it's moved, it's, it's done. So that's, that, my question is about process. I understand the process now. And I would encourage you to, uh, make every effort to see the, the maximum retention of these, these, uh, stone walls because they really do. Uh, uh, impact the character of the town and on that road, I think they're very important as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's certainly something that Dick, we could. We could make a note on the plan, have the developer make a note on the plan that the own section of the wall that would be removed will be that. Which provides access out onto, uh, Mount Delight Road.
That sounds good. Thank you.
Anybody else? Oh, Jeannie.
Jeannie Menard, Mountain Road, Mount Delight, no, Mountain Road.
Are you sure?
No. So, um, quick comment. I think some of the tension between, uh, an open space development. Is just that it's, you know, our open space plan is advisory and optional to. Um, consider some of the, uh, aspects of our. You know, Deerfield's rural character, et cetera, et cetera. And I think what's unique about this particular setup is when you have housing, uh, a housing development. You know, typically, I think the vision and the original vision was, you know, we got the houses up near the road and out back. Uh, land for conservation and wildlife corridors and all that. But here we have a situation where. Our wildlife corridors and everything are actually, uh, being impacted by the housing. Uh, not by the rules, you know, the hundred foot setbacks, uh, are in the rules and will be adhered to. Um, but it would be, uh, kind of, um. Groundbreaking, I think, if in the process of. A subdivision going through the approval process, if there could be some give and take. With, you know, from, uh, all parties to what's the best plan for this area? As opposed to necessarily an all or nothing. You know, here's the yield. It's, it's what we can do. And in this particular case, it's eighteen houses. Um, and from a conservation perspective and an open space, which is input from the whole community. Has given input to that plan over several years. Uh, you know, if the developer could consider, uh, some of the aspects of an, um. You know, the goals of an open space. Well, maybe we could give a bit here and make the best plan. That would be more palatable to, uh, for all parties. And I, you know. Hopefully there's, as this process continues, there might be some, uh, some give. Uh, on both sides to, to work, to create the best plan that, uh, everyone could live with. And. That's again strictly optional, um, but it would be groundbreaking and just as. You as a planning board, listening to all of us, I think is pretty cool. A, a lot of meetings you go to in other communities don't allow, this is very, uh, helpful to, to give us our voice. And, uh, and listen. And, um, so thank you for that.
Thanks, Jean. Do we have anybody online?
Lynda McNair Perry, fourteen Range Road. Um, and honestly, I'm going, she's looking, she's just spoke. At the ten thousand foot level and I, I just, I just have something very specific on the plans. I wanted to point out. Um, the cistern was not going to be a buried cistern or an above ground.
Buried.
Okay, how, I don't know how you would put in a buried structure that close to the, uh, uh, stone wall and not end up. Undermining it. If, if you were to move it to the stone wall.
If it were to go out there, the stone wall would have to go.
It would have to go. Okay. I just wanted to make sure. I mean, it would become an obvious. Don't pretend it can't, you know, don't like, don't pretend.
Could do was to try to put it back, but it doesn't work. So it, it. It can go there or it can't go there. It can't, can't be both.
All right. And then just to somebody else's point and, and to your point about, you know, just don't say, go build the houses and hook it. I just wanted to let you know, I have projects that I've done in Hooksette that are now sitting on a shelf. Because private developers came along and said, we'll put in a whole new sewer system for you here, if you let us build houses here. And it doesn't even go out to bid. It's just all private money. So. It is different than what's, I mean, to be fair, I understand, but we're not, we wouldn't be, they're asking for people to come into their town. They actually. Raised their hand and said, please developers do this. So I just want you to understand that.
Oh, I do understand.
That's a difference. That's a difference.
I do in many of those developments.
We're not necessarily, I know, but I'm just saying, we're not shoving them in there.
What he was talking about. I was just cautioning on the way he put it.
I understand that, but I just wanted to also just say it, it is night and day, those.
Yeah, it didn't, didn't come out right. So we, we.
Anyway, sorry.
Good. All right.
Sorry, just two little things that I picked up on. Thank you.
Thank you. Sherry on Zoom, would you like to say anything?
I would. Thank you so much, Fred, for acknowledging me. Um, great meeting. I appreciate all your information, Roscoe. And I appreciate everybody's comments and I am, um. I, I'm concerned about the site, obviously, and I think that. I, I talked to a couple of regional planning commissions and I talked to, I, I read our zoning ordinance. And we have to have a septic reserve of four to five thousand square feet. So that in the event that there's any increased precipitation, our septic systems on particular sites can handle that. And I don't know how this particular site can handle that level of septic reserve. And I just, you know, from my, uh, you know, I spent my whole life in the environmental field. And I, I don't know how this particular site could handle this number of houses. And this amount of, you know, input and output from the houses, but that's up to you guys to decide. Um, and then for my particular comment, I'm increased, I, I'm interested. In how we are considering future precipitation. Because, you know, we can't ignore that the climate is changing. And when you talk about designs, Roscoe, you're talking about designs that are from antiquated information. And I think that we need to acknowledge that our precipitation is going to increase. And we're going to have more rain and more rain on snow and more flooding. And all of that is just really not compatible with a huge development on an area. And when I first read the, when I first read the, um. The, the survey, it's like, okay, so a ton of wetlands, steep slopes and very steep slopes. Like for me, in my career in the environmental field of over, you know, twenty-five years. Why would you even develop this property? And I understand that Ed Cross has hi- his rights to develop his property. But for me, I just think that we really need to be super conscious. Of this type of desire for development because. It's an inappropriate site to put that many houses on and it's ultimately going to impact Deerfield. And I think that, you know, all of the people before me have spoken very clearly about like. You know, the impact of more houses and the tax base and all that stuff. And I, I care about all that. Believe me, I'm a taxpayer. But I also care about the environment and I don't know how on steep slopes or very steep slopes with a lot of wetlands. We can provide adequate setbacks to put in the amount of houses that they're proposing. And then, so, so that's one point and I'll stop there. And I'm sorry, I can't be there. I have a, a health issue that I can't be there. Um, my second point, and this is a really important point for me and Jeannie Menard, please chime in with me on this. Is that when, um, Mr. Cross bought additional property from, um. The, the neighbor Thompson to buy those lots that can be considered the open space lots. And the woman who, whose letter was read early on in the meeting is those. Properties aren't developable anyway. And so to put those properties considering. Them as open space is they're already not developable. So that's redundant. And we, we need to think about that in terms of what sort of precedent we set for this community. And how we move forward. And so if they're already not developable, why would we consider them open space? Cause they're already open space. So I, I'm just concerned about how this is all trending. And I just wanted to voice my opinion and I hope to be at the next meeting. Um, but I just wanted to share those insights and sort of ideas for you to chew on as a planning board. And thank you for giving me this time.
Thank you.
I, I, I'm sorry, I can't hear you. So if you're responding to my comments, it would be helpful if you could talk to a microphone because I can't hear you.
The state doesn't allow more than one house per property on a class six road. That doesn't condemn the entire lot to one house. The state doesn't want a bunch of houses. So you got one lot, you can put a house on it and you can, the back of it can be sold to anybody. That's very clear. And we discussed, discussed this very at length, um, previously.
Okay, I guess I wasn't part of that discussion, but I did look at our zoning ordinance and the open space part of it. And it did say, and Jeannie, um, help me with this. Um, when you set aside space to be considered open spaces part of an open space development. There are usually deed restrictions associated with that open space. And so I would wager and I would, I would put forth. That to the planning board, if they choose to even consider this, which I can't even imagine they would, but you might. Um, you know, that if there are those additional properties. Purchased recently to give the open space requirement that those have deed restrictions on them. So there is no development in the future on those particular properties that were purchased from Mr., um, Thompson. Thank you.
That, that will happen.
Well, yeah, there'll be a homeowners association and, I mean, no, no development of the open space.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Karen Fest, the Mount Delight Road, um. One of the comments that was made was that, um, a lot of places are going to this. You know, open space concept. And again, I'll say just because. We can, doesn't mean we should. Just because other places are doing it. A lot of places are putting land into conservation. But I don't hear that being mentioned. A lot of people, a lot of places are putting, um. Elderly housing in. I don't hear that. Low income housing. I don't hear that. So I don't want to hear, a lot of places are putting in open space concept. And then we should be doing it too. That doesn't mean it's a carte blanche comment.
Just to, as a follow on to your comment, uh, we had, uh, we had tried revising the zoning ordinance to allow for. Uh, workforce housing and, uh, which basically. If a developer was agreeing to put in, uh, submarket, uh, housing. Submarket price housing. And the, they, the board would allow a higher density. Uh, rather than three, three acres per, per lot, it would be something less than that, depending upon. How many the developer was planning on putting in. And, uh, I think we tried to put past that, uh. At least twice and it was turned down by the voters. So.
Anybody else? Go ahead. Uh, Ed, go over to the mic, please.
Ed Cross. So in specifically regards to what Jeannie had mentioned, as far as coming together and. In trying to, what I assume she was trying to explain is perhaps minimize or, or remove. Or shrink the development into less slots, um, to try to give a give and take. So the reality is, is I am given a give and take. Because I have fifty more acres that aren't part of this, that I'm not using for this open space development. I could use that fifty acres and I could increase my lot yield and I could put in more houses. I'm not doing that. This was what I thought was the best conservative way. Of maximizing a very reasonable building envelope area for these houses. I didn't try to cram in everything I possibly could have utilizing the whole entirety of all of my property. I reserved a fifty acres of that approximately. That isn't even part of this. It doesn't come down anywhere near the Ridge Road end of the property. It doesn't come down anywhere near the Ridge Road end of the property. It doesn't access anything from Ridge Road at all. It is completely separated from it. So I have looked at a reasonable, conservative, um, development on this piece of property. Okay, so I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, Ed. Uh, anybody else? Okay.
Uh, this is Sherry Godluzki again on Zoom. I'm sorry. I appreciate Ed Cross's, um, desire to be considerable, considerate and making his property available for development. But I, I, I guess I just have to say, uh, that I think that it's really not a property based on the contours, the, the steep slopes, super steep slopes, poorly drained area and lots of wetlands. It doesn't seem like a really good property to develop, no matter what we talk about here. I really can't, I, I, I would not like go out in the world and say, whoa, where can I put a great development right here? You know, and if he's got fifty-two other acres, maybe he should consider a development in some other area that is more hospitable. Because with the steep slopes and very steep slopes and lots of wetlands and poor drainage, I mean, come on, like, what else do you need to say no development? So I just think that, you know, Ed, you're very like, oh, I appreciate your benevolence and not developing everything. But I think maybe perhaps for your income generation, you might consider a different property. Since you have fifty-two other acres to develop. And I'm not saying in Candia or Raymond, you know, I'm not trying to push it to other towns, but I'm just saying, you know, my, my background is in natural resource management. And when I look at the steep slopes, very steep slopes, poor drainage and wetlands, I don't go to development. I go to protection. And I go to protection for our groundwater and our drinking water. Cause I bet Ed Cross, you would like to have drinking water for the rest of your life. And I bet your son, who has developed a house on Ridge Road, would like to have drinking water for his life. And I think we need to think about that because as our climate continues to change and we're getting incredible downpours coupled with really long droughts in the summer, we really need to think about these things and where it's appropriate to develop. So I support you in using your, you know, rights to your land and what you want to develop. But I also think since you have so many acres, you might want to consider a different place to develop. Because I don't think this is the best site to develop. And that's my personal opinion. And I'm glad it's on record and I will let it go. Thank you so much for the time to talk.
All right. Thank you, Sherry. Uh, we're closing the public comment now.
Cause of me.
No, we have, uh, they, we're, we're, we've progressed as far as we're going to progress tonight with this particular plan. Um, so you guys are gonna ask it for a continuation and, and a site walk. Um, what's your schedule looking like, guys?
What's the weather supposed to be for this weekend?
Uh, lousy.
Not good.
So we can get that.
So, um, better to walk in the snow than the rain.
That's kind of hard for those of us at work.
So, um, why don't we, uh, so the next weekend is April first, which is a Saturday. April second is a Sunday.
Right, I can't, can't do either of those.
Okay, so the next weekend after that would be the eighth and ninth.
Think I can do those.
Okay. Okay, the eighth is the day before Easter. That's a Saturday. Okay, um, any weekdays available for you guys?
For April, I'm not sure. We got, we got, uh, three other construction projects starting up, so.
Um, all right.
All right.
So. Check the weather here.
We have snow this Sunday, but what about this Sunday?
I'm gonna tell you here in a sec. Yes, it's not looking good.
No.
It's more snow on Tuesday. All right. So next planning board meeting is April twelfth. Okay, so that would be the twenty-sixth. Okay. I'm good. Twenty-second works for me.
Is it gonna snow?
If it's snowing on the twenty-second, I don't know what you guys want to do, but we'll be there. We'll get the loader and we'll plow a road. Okay, so the twenty-second at eight AM or nine AM.
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock.
Going with my underwear and it, it.
All right.
Roscoe, I want you to take a look at lot eighteen.
He can stand there on the.
Okay. So we're going to continue this.
The twenty-eighth?
To the, the, the twenty-eighth for the actual meeting.
Right.
But the site walk will be on Saturday, April twenty-second at nine o'clock in the morning. And that is a public hearing.
For the record, it is twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth?
Oh, for the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
The twenty-sixth, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So the, the meeting will be April twenty-sixth, which is the last, the fourth Wednesday in April. The site walk will be Saturday morning, April twenty-second at nine o'clock. And everybody is invited.
Be ready for ticks, I guess, at that point.
So at this point, we.
And procedurally, uh, we'll, they'll have provided, uh, at the, the next meeting, the twenty-seventh? Twenty-sixth, they'll be providing plans back to us, addressing some of the issues we talked about tonight and also the comments that we had previously made. Uh, once we get those, assuming that, uh, they pretty much address uh, our comments, then we will end up turning the plans to our consultant, Pete Nordstrom, for them to review. And they'll be reviewing them, uh, specifically against the subdivision regulation. And they'll be getting back to us with their comments as to whether or not, or how well they're meeting, meeting the requirements of the regulations. And then.
And anything that we potentially bring up at the walkthrough.
Right. So just, just to give you an idea what, what the process will consist of.
Okay.
I'll make a motion for continuation to, uh,
April twenty-sixth.
April twenty-sixth.
Second.
Is that gonna be the first item on the agenda?
It should be, yeah.
Okay.
And all those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Okay, um, excuse me. The next one is the public hearing for New Hampshire Electric Co-op Tree Cutting on Candia Road in Deerfield, New Hampshire. Um, Tim has informed me that he's gonna be in on Zoom.
Yes, we have. Hi Cory, thanks for joining us.
Yep, thank you for having me. Um, so my name's Cory Keith. I'm the arborist. Uh, I manage the, um, Raymond District for New Hampshire Electric Co-op. And we will be, we're planning to do our standard maintenance cutting on Candia Road. It's about just under a half a mile of line. Um, prior to us doing our maintenance, I went out there and assessed, uh, to look for trees that I thought were a danger to our, our infrastructure and that would affect the reliability of our members on that road. I identified six trees that were larger than the fifteen inch circumference, uh, listed in RSA two thirty-one, one fifty-eight. Um, out of the six trees, three of them are dead. Two have structural defects that I said, they basically have decay, um, or poor branch structure. And then there was one healthy oak tree that I did tag. Um, the reason why I tagged it is very close to our primary conductor. Um, one thing in the wind, it can blow back and forth and actually make contact with that, that, uh, wire, which is carrying, um, seventy-two hundred volts. And also if, if we were to just trim it, all there is that's left in the trunk is just sprout. So the next growing season, it will roll right back into the conductors. Um, the contractor that we are planning to use for this project is TTS, uh, Tree Service Company. They are headquartered out of New York. Um, this is our second year using them. Uh, they, they did work in Nottingham, currently doing work in Sandown Chester uh, this year. Um, all the work will be performed in accordance with accepted arboricultural standards. Um, all brush and limbs, cut them roadside locations will be chipped and woody undeveloped locations. We do disperse the chips in the woods, making sure not to accumulate in streams, wetlands or, or in large piles, um, of anything of that sort. Um, if we, we offer the chips for free, if anybody is, um, looking to have some, I'd, I'd be happy to drop some, some off. If anyone in town is interested, they, they're more than welcome to reach out to me.
So have you already flagged the trees?
Yeah, all the trees have been marked with, uh, red and black ribbon, these six trees.
Okay. I think we'll just have to do a quick walkthrough and take a quick look at them. When is a, uh, good chance for you to take a walkthrough to look at the trees?
I could be available next week if, um, actually, I, I could even be available tomorrow. That's a possibility.
When, uh, when can you be available?
My walk around? I'm out and about, so.
Let me.
Give me a call when you go and I can.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna just wait for Fred to come back. Uh, Fred, this is the, uh, arborist from, uh, who represents, uh, New England Co-op Power. And he's flagged, I, I think you said six trees on Candia Road.
Yes.
And, um, I asked him when he thought he might be able to go for a walk around and asked, uh, Dawn when he thought he could go.
Mm-hmm.
Um, he said he could potentially go tomorrow. Like, I don't know what your schedule's looking like.
Uh, I'm, I'm busy and equal. Uh, tomorrow's bad.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, but I was thinking for, I, I'm around and, and then I thought if Dawn could make it, it would, uh, you know, he, he knows a little bit about the power line, so.
Right.
Um.
Yep, that's, I'll say the least.
Um.
Yeah, you guys, good.
Do you want to, uh, you want me to call you?
Yeah, give me a call when you're going.
All right. So what you can do is you can give me a call.
Okay.
And, um, you let me know, you know, I'd say somewhere after ten o'clock in the morning would be better for me. I have to move some equipment around.
Okay.
And, um, you can give me a call and I can call Dawn. Uh, he happens to work for a power company, so he has a pretty good understanding of what's going on.
Okay.
And if, uh, you can give me a call after ten o'clock tomorrow and we can meet up. I'll give you a phone number to call, actually two of them.
Okay.
Six oh three.
Yeah.
Three, four, zero, six, eight, four, one.
Six, eight, four, one.
And the other one would be six oh three, two, three, one, seven, two, six, eight.
Six, eight. Okay, I will call after ten o'clock tomorrow.
And my name is Pete.
Pete, great, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, that works.
Are we good with that? All right. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Have a nice night.
Yep. Um, we have a continuation, uh, for public hearing for application for conditional permit for Eversource Energy on the three oh seven transmission line.
So I gotta, we get a letter from the Conservation Commission?
Yeah, I'm gonna read that. Um, uh, this letter is dated March seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, Deerfield Conservation Commission, uh, Deerfield Planning Board. Reserve, uh, excuse me, representatives from VHB and Eversource attended the Deerfield Conservation Commission meeting on March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three to discuss a conditional use permit, application for proposed utility maintenance on existing three forty-five KB, three oh seven transmission line in Deerfield. They requested that the Deerfield Conservation Commission share any recommendations with the Deerfield Planning Board. In general, the timing of the replacement projects could be altered to further minimali- minimize the potential impacts to sensitive habitat. This particular project is slated to start in July, which is nesting season for turtles and snakes, of which several species found in Deerfield are threatened, endangered species of concern. Uh, Blanding's turtles and Black Racer's project work took place in the fall or early winter would seemingly be less disruptive to wildlife and wetland ecosystems. Given the project, excuse me, given the proposed project timeline, we would like to request that Eversource and VHB provide more specific information regarding the best management practices related to rare and threatened and endangered species that will be utilized through the work period. We would request that there be independent monitors onsite regularly to monitor for rare threatening, uh, and endangered species, specifically turtles and snakes. Where these practices have been clearly outlined in a forthcoming to the New Hampshire Fish and Game Department, the DCC would like the opportunity to review and provide feedback on those practices prior to the application approval. The application does outline the erosion controls will be inspected daily by the crews and weekly by an environmental monitor to ensure the best management practices are maintained throughout the duration of the project. At our request that, at our request that any monitoring of the BMPs would be conducted by a third-party consultant not employed by VHB or Eversource. We appreciate the role you have played in continuing to encourage important protective measures for Deerfield's water resources, habitats and wildlife. Sincerely, Sarita Frank. Okay. You guys respond.
All righty. Uh, my name's Kurt Nelson. I'm with the Licensing and Permitting Group with Eversource. I'm with Sherry Treffrey from VHB. Uh, we were fortunate in that we did receive our, uh, consultation, uh, back from the New Hampshire Fish and Game. Um, remember this project is in, uh, the largest portion of this project is a replacement of OPGW between Deerfield and Elliott Main. So we have a lot of areas to consider. And we understood from our meeting with the Conservation Commission, the timing of the work in Deerfield was, um, uh, important in terms of minimizing impacts to rare species, turtles in particular. And, uh, so Fish and Game did address that. Uh, they did advise us to, um, not work until after September fifteenth in the Deerfield Substation area. And that's something that we can comply with. The only hitch is, uh, we have a, uh, OPGW, OPGW stringing event that will take place in Nottingham into Deerfield. And where we are in Nottingham has a different time of year restriction. There's actually a snake concern over in Nottingham, which they want us to be out of there by September fifteenth. But we have to be at both places at once. So we've requested, uh, further consultation with New Hampshire Fish and Game. We'll most likely have a, uh, a meeting with them to talk through different scenarios. And this can be very easily resolved by sort of just. Different scenarios and this can be very easily resolved by sort of just. Sort of clipping the tail end of a preferred time of year restricted area. So most likely, I think the most likely outcome is that we will be doing work in Deerfield after September fifteenth. Um. But what, what we will do is take special precautions on the Nottingham side. Uh, yeah, I think if we can do the civil component, what we have to do is lay construction matting. When you have the, the concern with the snakes is denning and they're, oh, you know, never great to be in snake areas anyway, but. Bigger concern that you're potentially going to, uh, potentially lay mats on top of a den, an unknown den. So they would rather have you see working during the active season when it comes to snakes and that's the concern there. So we've got diametrically opposed time of year, uh, scenarios here, we get, we need to be at two, two places at once here, so. But it, I think there's room enough here to thread the needle where we can get the, you know, optimize to the, to the extent practical, practical. And, and make something work here. Um. Like I said, we'll have that consultation with Fish and Game, probably most likely additional consultation, hopefully next week or the week thereafter. Uh, I'm happy to provide to the planning board, uh, the email of the. Recommended conditions that we have from New Hampshire Fish and Game, they are quite lengthy. Um, and we are, uh, prepared to comply with them. With the one caveat of the time of year, just working through the time of year issue. Um, as far as monitoring, we do have. Um, my understanding as normal practice, Keisha Nordstrom will have some sort of oversight with this.
Right.
And we also do have a healthy, um, amount of monitoring that would be conducted by VHB. For this, uh, for this project as well. Um, so adding an additional layer of monitoring, we feel is not necessary. Given that we've got, like I said, we've got Keisha Nordstrom and, and our consultants, we feel that's, that's sufficient.
Yeah, I, I, uh, I agree, I think our. But our Keisha Nordstrom's been doing this for us for years and they, uh, they send us pictures of everything that they do.
And we're, we're comfortable with the work that they do and the oversight that they provide, so. I agree with you, you don't need to, somebody else be on that.
So you're gonna have another meeting next week with, uh, Fish and Game? And you have, uh, what they've recommended to you right now? Um. You see any more recommendations coming out of them?
Yeah, they, so what they'll do is, uh, hopefully they'll. Through, through additional consultation with them, they will amend. Hopefully what they provided us and, 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 and we have, there's a few different options in terms of how we wanna. Play out the scenario and we just wanna have a meeting faced, uh, via teams. Have a meeting with them and just walk through the two scenarios and see what they, do you wanna, is it better to have more deference to the snake? Or is it better to have more deference to the time of year for the turtle? Um, understood. You know, the, we, we are often in the situation of having to work in sort of turtle areas. Um, if the area, um. You know, often, you know, when it comes to turtle, uh, burrowing areas, inundated. Wetlands, you don't wanna be laying mats during the dormant season, so. We'll try and get. You know, further guidance from them in terms of what they feel is the best optimized, you know, what, what makes most sense optimizing. You know, the protection for both species and figure out what, what, what would take preference.
So do you wanna have that meeting and then come back and see us at the first meeting in April?
Uh, we can do, I, I guess my preference would be to, I, I don't know if we can do. Uh, something conditional that we, we can forward you the final. The final, um, recommendations from New Hampshire Fish and Game.
And include, include those as, in, in our conditional approval to as, as conditions.
Prior to, I assume, you know, prior.
We'd want the conditional approval would be with the date, with the updated.
Right.
Email that you, you could give us updated information from your meeting on.
Right.
When that, when that happens, Errol? No, you can't have them there. Yes. Yes, you can. If you could send them to the Deerfield. Conservation Commission, that would be greatly appreciated.
But of course. Yeah, absolutely, yeah, so absolutely, and I assume we have a few other triggers that we are, other stuff we had taken before we actually started constructions.
Do you have a scheduled date yet with the, uh, Fish and Game?
For the.
Meeting day.
For the addition.
Meeting day?
No, no, I just sent that email today, they're usually fairly good in terms of.
So basically, we would give you a conditional approval with, um.
With a, a start.
We didn't need a date from when you have your meeting and the results of your meeting, what we would need.
If, I mean, we, we do have time, so if you feel procedurally, it's better for us to come back, we can do that.
Probably end up being easy if we could.
Yeah, if it's just easier and, and if it's just too complicated, that's fine, like I said, we, um.
Three weeks.
At this rate, you know, it's March, still March, we have, we have time.
Okay, so we could schedule them for the first meeting in April.
What, what does that meeting look like?
Um, I, I don't know. It, it shouldn't be too far.
Okay.
We can handle, I just saw something.
Okay.
I think we have a, like, a conceptual so far.
Oh, that's it?
Yeah.
Oh, wow, okay, so put them number two, I guess.
We can, um. Schedule you guys to come back in on April, I think it's eighth, is that what it is? Um. No, uh, maybe the twelfth, I believe. Well, that's right, A- April twelfth. And you could be, uh, at this point, it looks like you'd be second in line. And then that way we can get this thing all buttoned up for you.
Okay.
And any letters or whatever you guys get, um, just send them to the Conservation Commission as well.
Okay.
Genie?
I was wondering, and I had asked this at our last meeting, if, um, the email that is going to the board. Uh, if it's, is that just recommendations coming back from Fish and Game? Or is it what you presented to Fish and Game and the response back to the whole package? And full transparency, I'm interested in reviewing the best management practices for this project. And also other projects in town, because on a learning curve of what is the best management practice overall? So I'm looking for consistency and, um, you know, all those details. So my question is, is there any possibility for, um, for myself? Or, you know, the folks from the board or the conservation commission to go get hold? What was your best management practice of the course and the responses?
Is our, is our correspondence memo part of the AOT application, is that, is that amended now? Okay.
So.
Okay.
Basically, we're gonna get all of that information for the next meeting.
Okay, well, that's what I wanted to make sure, you weren't just getting a email.
No, 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 we're gonna come back. We're gonna have a complete meeting on April twelfth.
Yeah, yeah, so processes, we, um. We put together fairly detailed memo, it, it's, it's per the. Um. Fishing game is a set of fairly new rules that the fishing game has pursuant to. Review of applications under whatever permit, in this case, it's our alteration terrain permit. So we have a, a fairly standardized memo format that ticks off. All the criteria they're looking for, we've done many of these so far and we. We have bi-weekly meetings with New Hampshire Fish and Game and through that, we are continuously. Uh, getting feedback in terms of what their preference is in terms of various BMPs. So we're not too far off the mark when we, when we start out in terms of our recommendation, but I guess we can provide you. Our original memo and then, and then the correspondence back from Fish and Game.
Okay, so we're gonna have a continuation till April twelfth.
I'll make, I'll make that motion.
Second. Okay, all those in favor for the conditional you, additional use permit for EverSource? For April twelfth?
All right.
All right. Okay.
Alrighty.
We'll see you guys April twelfth.
Yep. Um.
Errol was not able to make it tonight, so we can close the meeting. Okay, public hearing for a lot line adjustment for Errol Rhodes, fifty-one Church Street. LLC, fifty-one Church Street, Deerfield, New Hampshire, map four fourteen, lot one fifty.
I don't need to use my easel for that, right? No.
Right.
All right, I'm Jason Franklin from Franklin Associates, representing Errol Rhodes. So what Errol would like to do is, um, on Plan D forty-three, three one four, which is. A conservation easement, he has an excluded area, uh, of approximately seven acres, so. And he would like to add that excluded area to fifty-one Church Street. Um, the included area is on map, um, four four two, lot one fifty dash one. And it's gonna be added to lot one fifty. Um, total acreage after he adds it will be ten point six.
Jason, I have to stop you for a second.
Sure, okay.
Formal.
I'm gonna read it, yeah.
Oh, I apologize.
In accordance with state statutes, you are hereby notified that the Deerfield Planning Board will hold a public hearing. On Wednesday, March twenty-second at twenty twenty-three, seven PM, at the George B. White Building for an application for a lot line adjustment. For Errol Rhodes of Deerfield, New Hampshire, fifty-one Church Street, LLC, fifty-one Church Street, Deerfield, New Hampshire, map four fourteen. Lot one fifty, consisting of three point four seven six acres. And Hershey's Farm LLC, Church Street, Deerfield, map four fourteen, lot one fifty dash one, consisting of a hundred and fifty-one, a hundred and fifty point one acres. The intent of the application is to adjust the lot lines between the lots, map four fourteen, lot one fifty. And then would consist of ten point six oh six acres. Map four fourteen, lot fifty dash one, would then consist of a hundred and forty-two point ninety-seven acres. You are invited to attend and offer your comments. If you are unable to be present, the board will accept your comments in writing prior to the hearing and read them aloud at the hearing. I have no letters, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Jason.
Um, yeah, so that's all he's looking to do, um, he just wants to take the excluded area and add it to lot one fifty. That way, uh, you know, give him just over about ten and a half acres, one point six five. Any questions?
So all, all the monumentation you're showing here is already existing out there?
Correct. Yeah, we wouldn't need to set anything, but basically, once you approve it, we would just issue the mylar.
Makes it easy for you.
Very simple.
So it's just, it's, uh, taking a three point four acre lot and adding seven point one acres to it, making it a ten point six acre.
Correct.
So it's making it bigger and, uh. Yeah, it's not. Okay, not much to say on this one.
Well.
It's not like Ed Crosser there, something easy.
Gotta have a top law one.
So I don't know, this could really impact the town here. I'm, I'm okay with it, everything looks good. Do you have any comments at all?
Okay. All right, I'll, I'll, uh, I'll make a motion to approve the lot line adjustment for, uh, fifty-one Church Street. And, uh. Have the chair sign on behalf of the board.
Then is that good? All those in favor?
No conditions on it either, so.
Yep. All right.
All right.
We can sign it, sign this, no, we gotta wait for the mylar.
Wait the mylar, yeah.
Yeah, I, I should have brought one, but you know.
Just, um, bring it over this, Nick, bring it over to the office and, uh, Chris can give me a call and I can come in and sign it.
Okay.
Or Errol will chase me down.
I'm sure he will, he's very eager to get this done.
All right. All right, thank you. Thank you, okay, we got a couple more things here.
Right.
Yeah. I wanna discuss. All right, um.
You're gonna manifest them.
Well, yeah, we're gonna get that, uh, we have a. Uh, Scott Frankowitz from, uh, New Hampshire Land Consultants has asked for a continuance on the gallant application. Because he has not been able to get test holes in for. The planning board due to the snow and all that stuff last month.
Yeah.
Um. And second question is Northwood is.
No, that's.
Okay.
It's just a version.
Okay, so that's it, he just needs a.
Was he continued to tonight?
Uh, no, he wants to go to the next.
It was originally.
For tonight.
I spoke with Scott, he asked if he could, so that jogged my memory. That he's also asking to be on April twelve.
He's asked to be on April twelve. So basically, but this is the, uh, this is for the lot in Northwood, isn't it?
Yes.
So that's the one off of Gulf Road, right?
For the drive on Gulf Road.
This is, this, I, I have the, I wrote the, on the sticky note, I'm sorry, it's been a long night, um. I put the map and lot number in the address on it.
Okay.
It's on that sticky note. All right. Map four sixteen dash twenty-eight, two oh six Nottingham Road, continuance to April twelve.
That's the one we did it.
That's where we did the walk through. Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, cuz he, he came after. Um, pretty much everybody left. Yeah, he, uh, he missed the boat on that one.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we were all there, we did the walk.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Came after the fact, so. Okay, so that would be better.
All right, uh, I'll make a. I'll start coughing here.
Okay, there you go, that's not the force of.
I'll make a motion to, uh, for continuance for the gallant application on, uh, off of Nottingham Road to. April twelfth. Third item on the agenda?
Yeah, yeah.
Third item on the agenda.
Second. All those in favor?
All right.
All right, we have the manifest. Which. Is Keisha Nordstrom. And the total on that is, uh. Eighteen thirty-four fifty-three. And. Thank you, okay, this is just the bills. I was looking at the, uh. So the total is, it's for Keisha Nordstrom for inspections. Um, and we do what I would assume, uh, for eighteen hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty-three cents.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
All right.
Bye. That is all we have. On this.
We, we're gonna be able to get the minutes at some point?
I, I had, had not received the minutes from.
I will go talk to Chris tomorrow.
Okay.
And see what's going on.
I can, I can.
Oh, you wanna give her a phone?
Yeah.
Cuz that would help our question earlier.
Yes.
In the meeting.
Yeah. But yeah, and I'll, uh.
We need that.
I'll talk to Steve Years tomorrow. Okay. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave the, uh, manifest in this folder. Yes, I will let Chris know. And gonna leave the folder here?
Yeah, I'll put it in there.
Okay. Um. I don't think we have anything else. Other than if you wanna, I wanna look at these real quick before you leave. So we need a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, we don't have a bill here, so.
Motion to adjourn.
A second.
All those in favor?